The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible.
Liberty, justice.
Okay, and now I'd like to ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Okay, first I'll do the roll call for City Council. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes, here, and I am attending from Harbor Springs, Michigan, in Emmett County.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here in Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Stallings. Councilmember Ferguson. And Mayor Garrett. That completes roll call for City Council.
I will do roll call for the Downtown Development Authority. Bobby Lovins. Bobby, you gotta unmute yourself.
Takes one klutz for every group. Bobby Lovins, DDA, Oakland County, Birmingham, Michigan.
All right, Brian Ford.
Mayor Garrett.
She chatted, she said she's here, Suzy.
Oh, she is, okay.
I don't know if she can't talk, but she says I'm here.
Oh, okay, excellent, well.
Hey, Dan, good to see you, my man.
See.
Kelly Garrett won't move her to, actually won't move her to panelist, okay. I'm sorry about that. Cheryl Mitchell.
Present, Detroit, Michigan, Wayne County.
Right. Well, we'll go back to Mayor Garrett, are you here, now that you're able to speak, would you like to chime in?
Here, thank you, Lathrop Village, Oakland County.
Thank you, Fred Prime.
Yes, present in Lathrop Village, Oakland County.
Excellent, hi. Pam Schermeier.
Here, also from Lathrop Village, Oakland County.
Dan Sugg.
Present, and I am in Plymouth, Michigan, Wayne County.
All right, and Dan Vertabar. All right, that concludes roll for the DDA.
I'll have you crawl roll for the PC, please. Okay, I'll make note as well that Mayor Garrett is present, and you've already stated where you are, so you'll be present for roll call for City Council as well. Now I'll do roll call for the Planning Commission. Chair Piotrowski.
Here, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Commissioner Fobbs. Commissioner Hammond.
Present, attending from Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Commissioner Huliza. Commissioner Cantor.
Present, Harbor Springs, Michigan, Emmett County.
Commissioner Stansberry.
Present, Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Here, from Ann Arbor, Michigan, Washington County.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will turn control of the meeting back over to the mayor, it's all you, Kelly.
Oh, Joy, I'm sure you were doing such a great job, thank you for the call to order, invite everyone to do the pledge of allegiance.
We did that already.
We did that already.
Let me know when we're at, that might just be helpful, too, after the roll.
We're on New Business 3A.
Okay, rolling right along, New Business 3A, the RCOC revised Southfield Road exhibits.
Hi, yes, okay, so as luck would have it, as I was putting together the agenda, I received an email from Jeremy Schrott from Spalding to Dockers Engineers, and he's one of our project leads for the Southfield Road project, and so he and I, and Jill, and Scott Ringler, we've been chatting over the course of the last crazy year with some of the modifications that we wanted to see for the Southfield Road project to, in order to get these, these graphics done and ready for the environmental assessment and public comment and all that good fun stuff, so Jeremy sent me these, the latest and greatest exhibits that were in your, in your packets for Southfield Road, so I invited him and Sam Pitser, Sam's here somewhere, I saw him, so I invited them both to join us and answer any questions you have, and maybe kind of give us a quick lay of the road, if you will, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jeremy and Sam, actually.
Okay, thanks, Suzy, yeah, I guess just for a quick update on this, we've gone through a number of meetings, both with Lathrop Village, as well as City of Southfield, Southfield Township, and Beverly Hills gotten their feedback on mainly related to the parking mitigation and the layout of the turnarounds, et cetera, and what we submitted, most recently is the compilation of all of those, of all of those edits. We're now at a point where if we don't get any additional comments, we're gonna go to public comment, and once we get public comment back, we can go to DRAFDA, which is, gets submitted to RCOC for their view, the municipalities for their review, and then on to MDOT, and finally FHWA.
Does anyone have any questions on, on what we have in front of us today?
So Jeremy, in the segments that are highlighted in, or outlined in black where it says total take, so is that, is that where, would those buildings be totally raised, essentially?
Yeah, the, the intent of that are, those are the properties that we cannot mitigate, either the right of way is needed for the proposed roadway and/or the parking can't be restored to a point that allows it to be viable business. So those are, those are total takes.
I had just one reaction, because this is the first time, I think, that I've, that I've seen the plans, at least in this detail. And that is, it's a little bit of a safety issue, if you, say you live in the northeast side of Lathrop Village, and you want to go south on Southfield Road, you will no longer be able to do that at an intersection, right? You're going to have to turn right to go north on Southfield, and then do the Michigan left to go south, but you know, during rush hour, if you're trying to get downtown, I can see that might be a bit of a problem, trying to wend your way to the left lane to order to do the turnaround. Do, do you have any sort of studies or information about safety when it comes to this type of construction, as opposed to the basic intersection layout, where there's turning lights?
Absolutely, we've got a, we've got a full traffic report that goes through and measures the volumes of traffic at each intersection, the turning movements that are gonna take place, and I mean, that's a part, a big part of the environmental assessment is to evaluate the safety of the preferred alternative.
Question to follow up on what Pam said, if we're making a Michigan right to make a left, is that what we're looking at when we're on 11 Mile, crossing over 696, and you have to do a loopidoo to get back to make a left onto Southfield from 11 Mile and 696 in Southfield, is that basically, and then if so, how many of those are we looking at?
If you're on, if you're on 11 Mile over 696, and you wanna, you're heading, say, westbound.
It'll be north on Southfield.
Okay, you're heading north on, you're heading north on Southfield Road, and you want to head westbound on 11 Mile, then yes, you have to right to eastbound 11 Mile and use the crossover that currently exists over 696.
Correct, that's what I happen to do every day, yeah. So how many of those are we looking at, though, what's the number that that would impose under the proposal?
The, are you, are we talking about 11 Mile specifically, because 11 Mile is.
In general, just in general, up and down the corridor.
Oh, how many turnarounds are there, I don't know the exact number, but I want to say there's at least two to, two to three per intersection. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
Yeah, the only reason I bring that up is, you know, I'm trying to get a visual, like real life, I think of Woodward, I think of the 11 Mile thing, I think we're pretty accustomed to doing that as drivers. I think that's part and parcel. It's not that many, what you're proposing isn't that many of them, frankly, right?
No, it's mainly at both north and south of the intersections, as well as that kind of key points that tie into some of the more major side streets, and that's all been developed via the Traffic Board of.
Exactly.
How many right turns, how many left turns are being made at each intersection.
Exactly, right.
Hey Jeremy, this is Fred Prime at the DDA. The buildings that are identified as, as Bruce was looking at the total takes, or some of the partial takes, are these city-owned buildings, or are they privately owned, or how are, you know, how do you, you know, have you been kind, depending on how we, you know, what's approved by the community, you know, how do we address ownership and that sort of thing?
Yeah, these are, these are mostly privately owned properties, so I mean, there's a number of different processes you can go through for, for negotiation of purchase of those properties, or ultimately eminent domain.
Yep.
So this is Mark Piotrowski, is that the responsibility of Lathrop Village to approach these property owners, or is this something that happens on a higher level?
I mean, Sam, I guess correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this would go through like a right-of-way phase through the FAC, so this would be a part of that process, you'd have to secure the right-of-way prior to this project moving forward from a construction standpoint. That's, that's correct, so once, once we've been successful, and we get through this environmental assessment phase, we'll kind of shift, we would shift gears into a more of a right-of-way phase, and start approaching property owners as, as needed.
So we're still talking several years here.
Correct.
Actual, okay, yeah.
But still, great question, great question.
And, and once, and once those buildings, you know, let's say they're successfully taken over, then who owns those, those, those buildings and that property at that point, is it the city, or is it the county?
Um, but. As we go to our right-of, our right-of-way phase, we would only be, what, I guess, I guess if we're talking about the total take, that potentially the county would end up owning that, those total takes. I should refer, the RCOC.
Right.
So this is Jason Hammond from the Planning Commission, I know one of the biggest concerns that residents that I've spoken to have about this project is speed through the Southfield Road corridor inside of Lathrop Village, and I see that, it looks like the area south of 696 is gonna be six lanes, and the area north of 696, on segment three, it's hard to tell, is it, it looks like, I guess, it starts at six, and then it whittles down to four, and then segment four is four lanes, is that right?
Yeah, so essentially from Frank Rock to just south of 12 Mile is a four-lane boulevard section, we have a lane at Frank Rock.
Okay. And I know, either traffic studies will be done, or maybe they've already started doing some of them, is there any expectation around how that will impact the velocity of traffic through that area at this point?
As far as the speed limit, I think everything is designed around the, around the current speed limits, so the layout from the lane drop length, and the configuration of the turnarounds, et cetera, is all established around that speed limit.
Okay, is there an expectation that this new configuration with the median and everything will reduce congestion?
It'll certainly reduce congestion, that's, that's part of the, I guess, goal of the environmental assessment in the future project, is to increase capacity and reduce congestion.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think the, one of the goals of the whole project as well was to slow, to slow the traffic, you know, along that corridor, which is the design, one of the major reasons for the design of a boulevard.
Exactly.
Great. Thanks.
So this is Mark Piotrowski, I just have a point of clarification, back to segment two, in the taking of the building at the, what would be the northwest corner, is it correct to say that you've expanded to within the full width of the right-of-way, or does the right-of-way actually get expanded as part of that configuration?
I, there are sections throughout here where the right-of-way is already large enough to accommodate the roadway, and then there's sections like segment two and segment three, where the right-of-way does need to expand to accommodate the additional auxiliary lanes, and that's where we would need additional right-of-way, which, if we're talking about the southwest corner of 11 Mile and Southfield, that, that is an area that we need to expand the right-of-way.
Okay. So that building would more than likely come down?
Yes, that, that right, the right-of-way needed is in the middle, essentially, of the existing building.
Says the concerned homeowner who lives right behind it.
Pain, pain, pain goes my heart. Right.
So I know it'd be speculation at this point, but what would likely happen with that lot, given its size, and, I mean, I guess one of the considerations that Lathrop has had with their properties is the shallowness of the lots that we have as it is, so that one would be even shallower. Be really curious to know what, what, if anything, would necessarily fit on that lot, or if it would remain green space? Or potentially, or what the, what the commission would have in mind for possible future development.
Jill?
Yeah, go ahead.
I heard Commissioner Hammond ask a question about reducing speeds, and whether that was one of the goals of the RCOC, and I just wanted to clarify that it, that I don't believe that is one of the goals, Jeremy, could you talk about that?
Um, sure, yeah, I think, I think right now, the traffic study is set up with the current speed limit, I don't think that was one of our items to aggress from, from a speed limit perspective. Our main purpose of the project was to accommodate the projected traffic volumes, basically increase and improve pedestrian cyclist travel, to improve roadway safety, which is mainly payment condition, reduce potential for crashes, et cetera, and then try to meet the intents of the overall master plans from the various communities involved. And obviously aesthetically improve the corridor as well.
I think we did have some questions about the speed of traffic, particularly along this commercial corridor, Commissioner Hammond's question, I think, was aimed at, you know, are we slowing traffic down because we have businesses in the corridor, and we want to make sure that we give people enough time to see them? Certainly, improving the traffic safety is important for both the shoppers, visitors, business owners, and everybody in the corridor, but I guess I would just reiterate the importance of the corridor, especially to Lathrop Village, because this is all the city has, is this corridor.
Yeah, that's right, there's, it's a, a conflict, so to speak, between the dealing with the congestion and moving traffic through more efficiently, so that there's less congestion, and the goals of supporting businesses in the city by slowing down traffic, and, you know, potentially providing an opportunity for people driving through the corridor to notice businesses, and kind of, you know, either, if they're directly going to a business, it's easier to spot if you're moving slower, or if, you know, you notice something of interest, you might stop, you know, on the spur of the moment, but if traffic's going through at 45 miles an hour, it's a little bit more difficult for that to happen. So I get that the traffic studies are based on the current speed limits, the anticipation why the project is happening at all is because you're anticipating, the RCOC is anticipating increased traffic volume, which needs a solution, right? The solution essentially is to move traffic through more efficiently, which is kind of counter the goals of what we're trying to do in support of businesses in the city, so, you know, that's, between that and the safety issue, like those are the two things that residents that I've talked to are concerned about relative to this project, and, you know, not expecting you guys to have answers to, like, how do we, you know, resolve that, I'm just bringing it up as something that needs to be, continue to be in all of our minds about what mechanisms do we have in place if this project goes forward as it's designed and proposed right now, that makes it possible for businesses in Lathrop Village, on that corridor, to continue to be viable.
Hey Jill, I've got a question for you, and you might be the wrong person to ask this of, um, in Birmingham, I think we have what's called the green ring, and I don't know if that's true. And there's a tremendous number of stoplights that bring everybody to a halt, and it's super annoying, because if you time it just right on the greens, you can just keep on sailing, how many traffic are within this proposal? So that perhaps that's a conduit to slowing it down, because one of the things you threw out there, Jill, was the pedestrian, or somebody did, it was the pedestrian, well, you can't be mowing down the pedestrians, right, so what about, how many traffic lights are we looking at?
Well, and I'm, I don't know the number of them, Jerry, you can probably answer that question, but I do know that that's one of the things that we've been consistent with in our, our comments, have been pedestrian crossings, and the importance of those, and the importance of using traffic lights to do that, we had a couple of comments on this version that we'll send over to Jeremy later, but that's one of them.
It is one of them, okay, fair.
And I think that gets to the, sort of the point about, I was gonna make back with the comment about getting people through efficiently doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be moving fast through the corridor, efficiently just means they're moving, a lot of times, sometimes we take, I think everybody does this, we take maybe what we think are shortcuts or cut-through, because we are just, we want to move, and we don't care that maybe we're driving down a street that the speed limit's only 25, we're at least moving, it may not take us any shorter, but we feel more satisfied because we're at least moving, process, I think that's gonna kind of keep in mind, if we think about the level of service that we anticipate for this corridor, it doesn't mean people have to go fast, they just want to be continuously moving and advancing.
Excellent point.
In terms of the cost of the project, is there any part of this that Lathrop directly is, would be responsible for, any of the parking? You know, when I look and see some of the parking is deficient per planning, you know, our planning, I'm assuming requirements, is there any part of this where we are responsible directly?
Yes, yeah, and parking is one of those areas, you're required to mitigate parking for any lost in the right-of-way, there's, on the exhibit, there's some kind of yellow spaces that are shown on these side streets, that would be the responsibility of the, the city.
So do we know what those are, what those, that cost is based on, you know, we have proposed here?
We, I don't have a separate estimate, I don't know, Jill, if you guys have put together anything on, on the side, on what these impacts are gonna look like financially?
No, no, I haven't looked at that, some of them, it's anticipated that property owners can make their own improvements to accommodate parking on site, and then others where the city may take a proactive approach and do some right-of-way, the side-street right-of-way parking, maybe there's a sharing, there's a lot of different options for it, but we haven't gone through and calculated out what that is.
And I have reached out, Fred, to the city's engineer, it was last, sometime late last year, to ask him, you know, we'll see in the next, the next agenda item, the parking concept that we're, you know, one of the parking concepts, and I've talked to him about, you know, what would be, what would be a ballpark cost for that? You know, so we can maybe get a jumpstart, even as, you know, as a DDA, that would be one of our, one of our projects, you know, within the, the development plan, is mitigating that parking, so I'll, I'll circle back to him, I know he cautioned me to, against going, don't go about it, wait until it's an eligible expense, and I
Sure.
Have me impatient, so I'll get that number for the DDA at least, and everyone will get it at some point, so.
Well, I think that's excellent, Suzy, sorry to cut you off, I think that's, because we were looking at a capital expenditure for alleys, to kind of get our head around, okay, how much money, I have no idea, but if we can kind of bucket list that, or kind of get our heads around it a little bit, you know, moving forward, I think that's vital information, hugely vital. So it's kind of in tandem, in my mind, with understanding our capital expenditure for, for the alleys as well.
Definitely.
You know, take that under our belt, too, so I kind of see those as sister projects for the DDA, to kind of take, take the lid off of that, so that, thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
For sure, for sure.
So, so the design, or at least the representation, the areas in yellow where there's parking being added to off, I guess, within the right-of-ways, or adjacency to the residential streets, is that count locked in based on this document, or the final document? And if so, what say does Lathrop have in the configuration, because just in a glance, it looks like some of these are, let's maximize whatever we can fit in, and who cares what the green space around it looks like, and what that does to the approaches into our neighborhoods, as opposed to maybe being a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, and not necessarily just trying to squeeze every inch of pavement we can out of those areas?
Yeah, no, I think we, we worked directly, you know, with Jill and her group on how many spaces we could fit, we took those spaces back and reevaluated them against driveways, and against the minimum requirements from the travel lanes, to set them up most advantageously to mitigate as many parking spots as possible. The ultimate goal of this document is to verify that we can physically mitigate the spots that we're losing in the right-of-way within the side-street parking.
That's right.
Yeah, the intent isn't ultimately to have a finished product, but it is to verify that we can physically mitigate the spots lost.
Okay, and the final design of that, has that become part of this project, or is the city's engineers have some say or control in assisting with the layout on that?
Yeah, I would say that if, if the layout is of concern, as long as we're not losing spaces, or something along those lines, and, or at least if we're gaining them in another spot, something that continues the mitigation strategy in a similar fashion, if we start talking about losing a bunch of additional parking, that's where we might have to go back to this document and modify it.
Okay.
So it's, it's somewhat of a guideline for the future, this, this is what we have to submit as a part of the environmental assessment, to verify that we can physically mitigate all the right-of-way parking that we're losing.
Right, yeah, and I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe, you know, trying to feel out what, what opportunities there are to tweak it, understanding that the parking count is the, is the key element that goes into the environmental assessment. But, you know, just looking at it in a glance, it, trying to, trying to make heads or tails of green space that's lost, certainly in front of the buildings as things are currently laid out, granted, we are gaining it in the, in the, in the median, and that's gonna have a positive impact, or has the potential to have a positive impact from that standpoint. Just trying to be sensitive to the entrances into the neighborhoods, and, and some of these areas can get ratty with their, with, with pavement and conditions of pavement, that's not to say the same thing can't happen with green space, but I just want to make sure that when we consider it, that we're looking at the entrances to the neighborhoods, and what those then feel like as we try to accommodate, some of this might be mitigated further if, if, if all of this prompts. Some of this might be mitigated further if, if, if all of this prompts further redevelopment up and down the corridor to handle it in a more sensitive manner than we possibly can right now. But, but it's, it's feeling to me at least like it's a bit imposed at this point, so.
You will, there's quite a bit of right of way parking and pavement in between the right of way and the travel lane that'll also be opened back up to green space as well.
Thank you. Cheryl, you have a question?
Yes, and I guess it's directed to Jeremy primarily. But my question is, does the city of Lathrop Village still have an opportunity to offer input that could modify the plan as long as it meets all the requirements in terms of the parking mitigation and any other requirements that the RCOC might have? Then the other part of the question is, is there a timeframe in which you're looking for that feedback?
Sure, yeah, we haven't submitted the draft DA to even RCOC or to M.D.A.FHWA. So we, that's part of what we were looking for is your final feedback by submitting these exhibits before we go to public comment. And, yeah, the timeline is obviously the sooner the better so we can keep moving this project forward and get it to the next stage.
Anything else, anyone else have any quick questions?
Just to follow up on Jeremy's comment, the sooner the better. I personally would like to have our comments to them. I mean, well, ideally, like by the end of this week, but I think by the 11th would be, I think the 11th would probably be more realistic, but in terms of timelines. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to B, which is zoning discussion. Our one district parking as a special land use.
Do you guys need us on any, any lumber?
Anyone think that we still need to have Jeremy? And Sam on?
I think you're safe to cut out a few, and Sam would like.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both for joining us.
You guys very much.
All right, do you want me to just jump right in, Suzy?
Yes, yes, please.
All right, I did not do a PowerPoint or anything for our discussion tonight, but I did send out, had last week, the two packets of information. So the first one is on, is the discussion for the R1 parking alternative. So some of you may recall, if you've been around for a while, that this is something that we have been talking about for quite some time. The need for the city to address parking in certain commercial, in the commercial area and how we do that. So obviously, as part of the last conversation, thinking about how we accommodate parking, particularly with the loss of what many may consider their own parking in the front on Southfield Road, but does in fact belong to road commission. So the, the memo that I put together outlines the, sort of the background and talks about the current ordinance and what it says. And it provides a recommendation. Now, this recommendation was also included in the last master plan. And as we're working on the current master plan update, we thought it would be a good opportunity before we finish the master plan to have this discussion jointly with all of these groups about the possibility of creating this district or this amendment to the R1 district that would allow the parking as a special land use when it's adjacent to a development. So I think I put in at the end the three questions. So the first one is there support for additional approaches to accommodate an increased demand for parking to encourage redevelopment? And I said, like the one proposed, there may be other opportunities, but this, there's limited space. We have residential neighborhoods on one side of Southfield Road, and we have Southfield Road on the other side of these properties. So there really isn't a lot of room. We've talked about the development of parking in the side street right of ways, and we've seen that in a couple of areas. But beyond that, we really have to look on the sites themselves and if there's an opportunity to expand. That does seem to be something that we run into. A planning commission can share their perspectives on development and the limitations that the current parking standards impose on new development. So that would be the first question, and I'll just kind of read through the other two. Unless somebody wanted to ask me something first. Did I hear somebody? No? Okay. Two questions in, in one about the main goal of the approach. So the way that the ordinance is written now, it talks about the, in the intent statement, we say that we're trying to encourage quality development that's in alignment with the master plan. But the standards themselves don't really say that. They don't really provide a mechanism by which the planning commission and the council would assess whether a project meets that standard. So is that something that we should consider? Or should it just be, we need to accommodate parking? And it, it, that's not as important to us as encouraging the redevelopment? Like, that it's, it should be sufficient for our existing businesses who need extra parking rather than waiting for somebody else to redevelop in a, to redevelop the site? So that's sort of the second question. And then the last question, just any other standards or conditions that you think we should talk about as we're working with the planning commission on this language? So that's the brief overview. I'm trying to be within Suzy's timeframe of her. We're a little over from the first item, so I'm trying to catch back up.
Well, I guess I'll start off, this is Mark Piotrowski, and I'm, I'm thinking that the, that the approach should encourage redevelopment of the site as, as one of the goals for being able to expand parking into these areas. I, I, I guess I, I view it as there's the potential for there to be just maybe a net gain in pavement behind them without necessarily seeing an improvement of what's out in front. And so I think that's just something important to emphasize.
Jill, from the DDA perspective, I'd have to agree with Mark because we've had so many opportunities that have kind of come and gone. We had a Starbucks conversation at one point and different things for redevelopment, but obviously, we keep getting shot in the foot with the, the whole parking thing. So I would agree with what Mark said. But chime in there, what do you, what do you guys on the DDA think?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I do have one question in the, the proposed ordinance change. It's, let's see, I think it's section three, item four, where it talks about where no public alley currently exists. It says, "A public alley or private backstreet equivalent shall be provided." What does that mean exactly? Who, who's responsible for designing and building and funding that, that alley?
Is a good question. Several years ago, so if you remember back when the whole Southfield Road project was changed back in 2009 after your original 2009 master plan with the Village Center, we helped the city with a, an access management plan. And the access management plan was prepared to illustrate to the road commission that certain improvements could be made to, to private properties in terms of driveway access closures and a very minimal boulevard. It was our recommendation early on that the boulevard be small and not a wide, thorough, fair median that really pushes the idea of fast travel, getting through the town as fast as possible. That the smaller, a smaller median with a lot of pedestrian crossings would do better to enhance the commercial district. So the idea of the backstreets and the alleys was part of that network of saying, we don't necessarily have to have these giant boulevards that are wide enough for trucks to turn around or vehicles to turn around, that those trucks and vehicles can use these back alleys as a way to get access without having to get back out onto Southfield Road. Over those intervening years, though, over the last 10 years, a lot of those alleys have been either not maintained as alleys, they've been issued licenses to use as parking, and some of them have even remained completely undeveloped. And so it's a question that's sort of, sorry for my very long answer to your question, but where do we want to go with these alleys? So the, the idea of the alley and the idea when that, this language was first developed back in 2000, what did I say, 13? That, that alley concept was still very much more realistic. And I would say that maybe now it's not quite as, because of certain improvement projects that took place where we didn't make space for these alleys to really be functional. And because we're trying to promote businesses that need more parking, and when they've asked for a license in the, that alley, those have been approved to allow businesses to, you know, get started and, and be successful with enough parking. But really, what do we see from these alleys? If we don't, if we feel like that ship has passed, then maybe we should be rethinking that. And so that's sort of another question, I guess, for discussion. And I heard that mentioned earlier about the alley improvement project too. And is that something that's really worthwhile at this point?
And I would guess that, this is Mark again, that trash pickup and deliveries, et cetera, are something that still needs to be addressed in some manner. So I guess when I read that, I interpreted it as maintaining, making sure that there's that consistent route. My, I guess I envisioned it, not that I've speaking towards having planned it, but envisioned that it would just be like a continuity so that the alley was in the same position relative on the lots and, and, and remained so as opposed to possibly being elsewhere or, you know, maybe service being managed in, in an area that's closer to the businesses, or sorry, closer to the residences upon which these might encroach. But I guess that's something that needs to be, you know, thought about.
I, I have a question for you, Jill. In, in looking at the rendering and, and looking at the language that you submitted, is this in anticipation of the conversation we just had with the road commission relative to the impact on parking availability on Southfield Road? Or is this to be a closer alignment with the, the comprehensive plan in anticipation that buildings will actually be moved forward from Southfield Road?
Yes. So both, really both.
Okay.
It does, I, I think that the, the master plan had anticipated that zero frontage lot line in, in recognition that a lot of, you know, we know where that right of way line is. And knowing that it's, most buildings are set back just a little bit from that right of way line. But then really maximizing the, the area for both building and parking by having that presence up the pro. So it does do, it does both, really. It does, it is a parking mitigation effort as well.
So then I guess my question is, does the proposed language assume that there will not be parking on the frontage of Southfield?
Yes, because in most cases, in, there's a few, but in most cases, there isn't parking in the front of any building. The parking that's there is the road commission's parking. But we don't count that in any way. So when someone comes to for a redevelopment project and they say, well, we've got 10 spaces out front, we say, but you can't count those because we can't, there's no way we could ever say that those belong to you. The road commission owns them and can do with them what they will. So that's part of that is in recognition that those spaces won't be there forever. And in, you know, some cases, they're really all gonna be gone, so.
Right.
So Jill, this is Dan, so the DDA. I was wondering, in relationship to like Jagged Fork and the redevelopment that happened there, and that's really been in my time since I've been here. They, they developed the front parking. They didn't count those, but they also did it on the side too. How come we didn't ask them to put it behind? Or did they?
They do have a few parking spaces in the back, just a couple though, for staff mostly, I think, right, Jill?
With space, right, Suzy? I mean, you just don't have the space for the majority, right?
Right, well, and the spaces that were done on the side street over there, that was done several years ago when it was Honey Tree. My gosh, I was like that for a second. So that was done in partnership with, you know, with the DDA and, and those property owners at that time to, to install those spaces because parking was so.
Well, that might be a bad example, but isn't that what we're dealing with all up and down? The district is that same issue, right? How, this looks awesome, but how would you develop that given kind of what our situation is today?
Well, the idea is that if you, if you look at the master plan for the city, that's the 2009, the 2015, and the current master plan, the vision is for the whole corridor to be redeveloped. The buildings that are there now are, you know, the ones, especially the ones that are by levels are really obsolete. People don't make buildings like that anymore, and for a good reason. They're very difficult to work with in terms of accessibility and to have any sort of retail frontage. I mean, office is fine, but for the shops that want that, that retail frontage, those are limited. So the, the ordinances that were created after that last master plan really are geared towards that kind of development that's shown in the concept. But in the last 2018, I think, communication to the road commission in response to their question about parking mitigation, those, those spaces in the right of way and the side street right of way were also included as opportunities. So that, that's another tool in the toolbox of affording people ways to create more parking. So we looked at reducing parking standards. So that was done several years ago. We had the idea for these side streets, parking areas, like the one that you mentioned. And then the opportunity to look at these other offsite places for parking. We also allowed for shared parking that's in the ordinance. So there's a lot of different ways that we're trying to tackle this. But this is just another one in the, in the toolbox. Dan, answer your question, Dan?
Yeah, it just, I think it would help if we could see how to get from point A to point B with some of these older businesses. I think that's gonna be, this all looks great, but I just don't know how you're gonna go to a, you know, an existing business and say, hey, you need to knock your building down, move it forward 10 feet and create all this parking in the back. Somebody's gonna pay that bill.
Jill, do you have, I was looking real quick, I'm not finding it super fast, but do you have that side street parking sketch quickly available that we could share in the chat?
I can find it real quick, yeah.
Because that might, I, it's a slightly different visual, Dan. And it's more like in the, in the Southfield Road plan set, RCOC brought up, you know, like Mark was talking about those little, the little, the little mini lots, right? Where they're like the little yellow spaces where you call it like eight little parking spaces. Those are the more doable things, right? And so there's a slightly different concept for that.
Would you allow me to share my screen?
Oh, yeah, sure, hold on. I mean, oh, panelists. There you go.
Thank you.
Good verse.
Yes, so this shows the side street. So this was just an example here, but this is effectively the model for the, that right of way parking. This would allow a private property owner to construct that parking and then utilize some of that towards their requirement. But it does show a little bit of landscaping and. But it does show a little bit of landscaping and and the importance of maintaining the sidewalk as well. And, and this takes time. So to suggest that, you know, the corridor didn't get to the, to the condition that it is, you know, overnight. It's been 10, 20 years of those buildings becoming less functional. And people not feeling that their investment or reinvestment in their property is necessarily worth it. So it's going to take time to, for these projects to get going and get to the point where people are, are seeing that need themselves and that where they say, oh, I think I can justify this expense now. I can justify this investment because now I have the ability to put in some more parking. And in some cases, it's just a matter of who's going to be the first one to do it. Hopefully we have a catalyst project that, that does show people that it's a good investment. Part of it also is the public investment. And through DDA enhancements and DDA public projects, that also gives the private property owners that confidence that their investment is worth it when they see the community investing as well. So there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Well, what tools do we have for that, Jill, other than the facade upgrade?
Well, that's one of them. I think, you know, working on some of these parking, you know, some of the ordinances, I think that's a relatively low cost.
That's the bridge we walk over to get, exactly.
Yeah.
Right. We've got to put the foundation in, build the vision, offer the additional tools of whatever we can do as a community to support that.
Right. And then being able to put packages together for property owners to say, or to outside in the forms of, you know, marketing packages for interested developers. Here's what you can do on this site. We talk about, we've got this much traffic coming through. We've got a road project in whatever year it's going to be and whenever it's going to be finished. But we'll be ready, we'll be ready. And here's what our vision is. Here's what our zoning ordinance fully supports everything that we show. Although now I feel like we can, we can refine that even further. It's been a while.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different things to be doing, but some, and some of them are, are physical improvements like those, like the alley projects that we talked about.
That's making this point.
Some of it was good and some of it didn't get quite finished the way that it should have been. So it wasn't necessarily effective. So being more intentional about the things that the DDA spends its funds on, I think, too.
Yeah, super, super great.
You know, there's an overriding element of what's being discussed is that some of the properties that are behind the commercial strips may currently be vacant land and some of it may actually be residential property that could potentially be acquired.
Right. Right. And I think if we think about the market value of those properties. If they are nicely maintained, occupied housing in the city, it's going to be very expensive for someone to acquire that house. And that property for the purpose of converting into parking, that's going to have to be one, like spectacular redevelopment to, to offset that cost. So it's more likely that it's going to be those vacant parcels. Maybe the, the underutilized, undermaintained homes that may be adjacent. But it's more likely it's going to be the vacant parcels. It'll be the easy stuff first.
So grab it where you can. Yeah.
Yeah, right. Totally.
And from the planning commission perspective, and I'll put this out there, I, I think the concern all along with approaching parking behind and in the, the making that adjustment, I mean, mental adjustment, homeowners. Addressing the fact that we are considering allowing parking to occur for the purposes of improving our business district. The intent is also to bring a, I guess I'd call it an infrastructure language that has a consistent quality to it. So that what's there has, is a respectful appearance for the neighborhood and for what we want it to look like. And to main, I guess to, to maintain that relationship between the character of the neighborhoods and a quality of our commercial district. And when I was getting at the parts and pieces of the parking off the side street, we, we've talked in the past in the planning commission about addressing it in a manner that looks planned, structured, uniform. So that, that as an infrastructure element has a balance of green space and pavement. And doesn't leave things fragmented in a manner to where it's not ideally maintained one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I would say I agree with those comments and really anything proposed in this amendment of the ordinance only enhances what is there. So I would agree with that.
Anyone have any further comments, questions? Okay, here and then move on to C cannabis discussion. We're seeing that up. You want to lead that one off or do you want me to go?
I mean, if you want, you want to go introduce your memo that you did and then we can kind of talk about the, the general ordinance.
Sure, let me go to that. Okay, so you got quite a packet from us on cannabis. The first part of it was a memo that we sent to the planning commission last month or the month before. Just to kind of set the stage for these, these future discussions. So what we wanted to include is background for all of you with sort of the history of it in the city. Our discussions, some of the important definitions that are included in the MRTMA, the recreational marijuana regulatory act. A little bit of a difference between talking about marijuana and cannabis. Generally speaking, I think it's appropriate to move towards a discussion of this as cannabis. Because that's the actual name for the plant rather than marijuana, which has some derogatory connotations to it. And we're seeing that in a few communities, actually really only one that I've noticed so far, but I think it's appropriate. Some of the considerations for the regulation and provision of marijuana facilities in the cities. We wanted to think about safety, parking and traffic, energy and water consumption and other nuisances like odor. Is there anything else? Traffic, we talked about traffic noise. What other concerns might there be? And then some of the ways in which the memo suggests, we outlined how we could regulate these items. So the recommendation is that we have two ordinances presented for discussion tonight. The first one is the addition of the city code that provides and the second one is the zoning ordinance amendments that provide the standards for the use and the location and site development standards. So currently the proposal, the recommendation is that we have two provisioning centers, which are essentially retail establishments. And two testing facilities. And these can always change in the future as appropriate. We've outlined in here a little bit of a process where someone would apply for a license and zoning approval. There would be initial review, there'd be a point system where we rank applications, knowing that we'll get way more than just the two that we are allowing for each category. And then allow those to move on. So we've included the ordinance languages and then there are the code and ordinance amendments, zoning amendments. And wanted to discuss confirm that the testing and provisioning centers are appropriate. And confirm that there are no other license types that the city wants to explore right now. And then consider the, the buffer distance. If there's any additional uses to consider as buffering from or remove any of them. We did put in the protection for shelters, a buffer for shelters to be 500 feet, but it could also be 1,000 feet. So we wanted to talk about that. And then we have the ordinances that are included. So we can answer any questions first about just sort of the overview. Or if you want Scott to talk a little bit more about licensing and the legal aspects of all that, we can do that too.
And just, and real quick, you know, this, like Jill said, this is a lot of information that we're dumping. I think you got, you probably got it all Friday afternoon. So, and for those of you that did, did take the time to look through everything, you'll, you'll see that there is a lot of overlap still at this point between the two. And that's something that as we continue moving this forward. You'll, in all likelihood, I'd probably see a lot of shifts. So when I did the, the general ordinance, I, I included a large section on operational standards, which Jill also has in the zoning ordinance. That's something that'll probably come together and probably more realistically end up in the zoning ordinance than in, than in the general ordinance. So, but again, we're just kind of putting a lot of stuff out there to get the feedback from, from these three bodies on the direction they want to see the city take. Jill's had already incorporated both of these into is kind of what, what our recommendation is. And one of the biggest things that you probably noticed that's in here that I left out was the yet to be determined point system. That's something that I think is going to, that's probably going to move, that, that's a target that'll move. And so that's something that I think council should have an input on. A direct input on crafting that council, planning staff, myself, city's administration staff. I think everybody should work together on that and coming up with just how are they going to allocate the points? What are the criteria? And so exactly what is, what is the scoring method going to be? Cause that ultimately is going to be one of the biggest pieces of this and how, how is it picked? How are these applicants picked that move forward in this process? So that's, like I said, that's something that's not in the ordinance, but something that definitely is going to be probably the next, the next big step. Once we get, get the ordinances worked out.
But has the point system been developed or we're still working on the point system?
No, we, we just finished the, the ordinance drafting and the next step would be, would be moving into that development, that development of the point system.
So can I ask a really dumb question?
No dumb questions.
I'm, I'm the hardest working, laziest person you'll ever meet. So when you do a SWAT, for instance. All you have to do is take your threats and weaknesses and flip them into opportunities. So, okay, so why could we not take some of your concerns like energy, water consumption? And if there's a business that's very forward thinking like, hey, we're solar panel driven, et cetera, you know, reusing water, let's say. Can we incorporate some of your potential impacts into the point system?
Yes.
To flip those and say, hey, people that are, people that are, you know, already pre-thinking and saying, hey, we're going to go totally solar panel and recycle.
Not only solar panels, but closed loop water systems and hazardous materials. Like those are definitely all things that we thought would go into those, that development of the point system.
Yeah, and those, and those are things that have already kind of fit and made their way into the operational standards. One of the things I was really impressed with was Jill's, the security language that she, that I stole from her zoning ordinance, the general ordinance. Because it was, it was very thorough, it was very complete. And it's, it's definitely, that's that type of thinking. That's what we're looking for. You know, it's, it's in later, we're going, we don't, we want exceptional businesses and we, we really want to take this opportunity in, in bringing the cream of the crop when it comes to this, this industry. So it's, it's a pretty, I mean, again, you read through it, it's a pretty extensive application requirements, a lot of information that needs to be provided. And it needs to be complete, it needs to be professionally done and that, and that's what we're looking for.
Nice. Yeah, good, good.
Yep. Along those lines, Scott, I had a couple of questions about the, the scoring and, and, you know, bringing in the best possible. So one of the things that was, was noted that it said that, you know, with, with what little there was about the point system that said any, any applicant with less than 70% of the possible points would, would not be included. I, I personally, I think that needs to go up. You know, to be 80, 85%, something like that, because one, I think we're going to get flooded with applicants. And I think right off the bat, we should limit it to just those that are, you know, are, are the, the cream of the crop. But then in terms of, then that's just my opinion, but in terms of scoring, can we do things in the scoring where, where certain things are a sliding scale? So for example, you know, for you know, a business that was going to put, you know, say, and I'm, I'm just arbitrarily making this up, but say tend to $25,000 of, of, of investment into the infrastructure, they, they get, you know, a point if they put 25 to 50,000, they get two points. You know, you know what I mean? So we can encourage investment in, in the infrastructure of the, the building and the landscaping and so forth from the applicants. Is that something we could do?
Yeah, absolutely. It kind of, I mean, what I had envisioned was, was along those lines, was consistent with that, with that we'll have categories of, of scoring. And then within that category, there'll be a, like you said, a range to use the investment, you know. The more money you put in, the more points you get with a cap, a maximum number of points in that area. And then, and that's kind of how I envisioned going through some of the different the different scoring process. But, but like I said, that's something that I want. I want that input to come from, from you guys because that, this is, you know, this is your community and these are, you know, the businesses that you're going to be living with, not Jill and I. So.
Also Scott, we can leverage what other cities have done as far as their point system, grading system, right? We're going to do what's best for us, but let's, we can look at what's out there already to see if we can use any of that.
Yeah, there's a lot. And I, I mean, Ian, he's not here tonight, but he did send over a lot of information. Salim as well, when they were on the marijuana subcommittee, but they did send over a lot of information about what other communities are doing. Like I said, a couple of meetings ago, definitely utilized that in drafting this and putting this together. But it ultimately it's, you know, this is, Lathrop isn't, isn't a hazel park. It's not a walled lake. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of unique differences to our community that require that we, we spend, you know, a little bit of modification from what those other, other communities are doing. But, but absolutely it's a basis to jumping off point for, for that system.
To that point, is there any way that we can steer the location of these, these businesses? I mean, I, I don't think any of us want this to be next door to city hall, right? So can we, can we insist that they be at some other point in the corridor, the business corridor of one of the mile roads? Or something a little less visible to, welcome to Lether Village, here's our our stoner hut.
Thoughts on that? I don't know if you saw the map that we included. But we did have a 1,000 foot buffer from parks, which does, as you know, there's park right behind city hall. So that does protect that area, the village center area. But I think two things to think about in terms of the retail establishments is that you do want them to be, be visible. You want people to feel like these are reputable businesses in your business district. And people shouldn't feel creepy or, or awkward or embarrassed or sketchy for wanting to go into them, right? We want to make sure that they're going to be well lit, they're going to be beautifully merchandised, they're going to be, you know, that you, not, not right up to the glass, but a little bit farther in, as I think I put into the zoning language. Nice signs, a nice appearance, safe feeling. The testing facilities can be wherever, because those aren't going to be open to the public. But I, I really feel like anything that's going to be open to the public, you want to have it be visible and you want it to be a good quality building facade and accessible. And there's safety and for, to generate that feeling of positivity about this.
I don't disagree with anything you just said, but I still don't know that I would like to see this right in the middle of city center.
Right. Well, it won't be because we, we put that buffer in there. So if you look at the map.
Yeah, the zone.
It's farther down on Southfield Road and then to the north, but not in the village center. Cause we, I do agree, we want to preserve that space for, like, now if we could say that we that we give you more points for a certain threshold of investment, and that would suggest perhaps enough for a new building, maybe like what we were talking about earlier, well, then maybe we can do that. I don't know that we can require, we can't require it, but can we incentivize it in some way? Maybe that's worth thinking about. But without that, I think it should be outside of the village center and keep those parcels available for redevelopment.
Jill, there's a store on 12 Mile at Greenfield, and it's next to a dog groomer. And when you whip around the corner heading towards Southfield, you would not even know that that is what they sell. It's got, for Southfield, I think that that's Southfield, not Oak Park. It's a really nice sign, very expensive sign, really nice storefront. It's quite a good-looking little shop. And it's right next to the dog groomer. And I can see what you're saying, where we're in attention as the DDA, we're to support business. They've got a business license and they're free to, this is what the state of Michigan says. And to give them that opportunity to succeed. That's kind of what I'm thinking, is that business, it's a very cute business. I drive by it all the time and I'm like, wow, I can't believe that's what they sell in there. You wouldn't even know, really.
Right, I think just like any other retail merchant, they are, it's very important for them to present a quality image to attract. They want to grow their business, sorry. I know you do want to run in for the night. But I think that they do that by becoming very, I don't want to say pedestrian, but you know, pedestrian-friendly. They want to attract people who may not have ever been into, you know, they're in the business of growing customers.
Right.
So I saw where the sunset was extended, the opt-out sunset. So is it determined then that, or has council has determined that after August 21, that we are, we as community are going to do this? So, no, okay, and so that's my next, so what determine, what's, I know we're putting these, we want to propose or put together drafts of these ordinances to give people a sense of what the requirements would be, so they'd have more information. Is that what we're getting at here?
Yeah, that was the, so the direction that we received from council after they appointed a subcommittee to research and study this. The recommendation from the subcommittee was that this is something the city should consider with the number that Jill had referenced earlier, two processing or two retail facilities and two testing facilities. So the direction that we received from council was to go ahead and prepare an ordinance that would, will ultimately come back to city council for their review and determination whether they want to accept that ordinance or not accept it. If they, if they do accept it, then it would either, we would either revoke the sunset ordinance, the opt-out, or do it at, once, basically we're do it before it expires and then revoke the sunset or not do it at all, which would then require additional review of that sunset, whether to make it permanent, the opt-out, or extend it again for additional considerations.
Got it.
The big thing is to not, and this is one of the things that the city's concerned of, is to not do anything about it. Because there are some communities that have not done anything, and they've ended up with ballot initiatives for ordinance language that they don't have any control over.
Yeah.
There was a question from Shuro that wanted to know if a community benefits, like redevelopment apart, be included in these proposed ordinances or in a separate ordinance?
So that could be part of the scoring system. Again, you can't force an applicant to make an improvement in a community asset, but you can award them more points for doing that, for more community benefit. And that's something that I would anticipate would be in that scoring system.
When I had a question about this buffer map, basically from the map, it's looking like you can only have, or if in fact it gets approved from council, that you can only have a business between 12 and Redwood and then 696 and Lincoln, is that accurate?
That looks like what the map is, yep. Basically, along Southfield Road, south of 96, and then just a little bit south of Redwood up to 12 Mile. And then a little bit on 12 Mile and a little, well, yeah, 12 Mile.
Jill, what's the thought of the pros and the cons about around whether or not we force them to distance among themselves, between themselves? So, you know, you can't have them together versus having them together. I mean, the obvious thing I can think of is if they're together, you could have a very high trafficked area. And if they're apart, I think the benefit of them being apart is that, you know, at least my experience from, as somebody who goes to Colorado all the time, is you saw, you know, wherever one opened up, you typically saw other businesses open up around it. So by forcing them to spread out, you could be, you know, giving more economic empowerment zones, I guess. But are there other things to consider besides those two points as to, you know, the pros and cons versus whether or not we set up our ordinance so that they have to be separated? I know in the draft ordinance, it says that they have to be at least 500, I think it was 500 feet apart. I guess the only other thing I can think of is in our community, because of the limited amount of space, you know, we might be precluding, you know, a second one moving in, for example, because they've got no place to go.
Well, I think those two points that you mentioned, but, and again, the parking, the traffic, the perception from, possibly from neighbors saying, well, why did you pick our neighborhood to allow these businesses to concentrate? So I think there's that, there's an idea of just spreading it out a little bit. And some of the, potentially, some of the other negative aspects that could be concentrated in that area, if we think about safety and there shouldn't be any odor, but if there were and things of that nature, those kinds of things. Most communities do have that buffer requirement, but some don't. Some have just said wherever you want to go was okay.
Thanks.
You know, um, anyone else have any other questions, well, not concerned, because I can go far. No, okay, so I did see that we had someone's hand up in.
Yeah, that was Precise MRI here, I'll allow them to talk.
All right, thank you.
Hi, did you have a comment for the groups?
I want to just say public comment is open right now. If you had any questions or comments regarding any of the things that were presented.
Oh yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just want to comment about the earlier topic about having it around City Hall. I believe, I own Precise MRI, which is right across the street from the city building, and also the 27300 building, which is the red building just south of City Hall. I feel like this would be a good candidate for the city, considering that it's really very close to the police department, as well as the building needs to be rehabbed. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that these buildings close to the city is not, wouldn't be considered an eyesore, in my opinion. These are legitimate businesses, just like any liquor store in any city around. That they're legitimate businesses and would bring, you know, good things to the city. That's the whole point of having it even on, even being discussed. So I don't want to take up too much of anyone's time, but I just wanted to put my two cents in for that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for public comment? Okay, well, board comments and questions. And I will apologize, I've had a death in the family and I also am sick as a dog right now, so I am not my jolly self, so I apologize.
Oh, you look terrific. Wow.
Looks like she's at work.
Yeah, yeah, you look terrific, wow.
Wow, then I must not look like crap other times, so, okay. Does anyone have any other? Thank you, board comments, questions?
I don't have any at this time.
I have none at this time.
I have none here.
Nope, no comment.
I think that if no one has any questions, let me just scoot over here to our mayor pro team before I try to do this.
I have one question before you leave the topic. Relative to a delivery service for personal use, would that fall under retail? Where would that fall as a license?
Currently, there's not any delivery service that's authorized under the state regulations, so that would fall into a a non-permitted use under the ordinance. So there is, there's nothing right now that authorizes personal delivery services.
How about drive-through, Scott?
No drive-throughs.
Yep, I didn't think so, but I raised it.
So Bobby, to your point, you have to stop in that nice-looking store, nobody's going to bring it to you.
Hey, it'd be cutting-edge, man, you never know.
There's a comment from.
There's a comment about provisioning centers, they are authorized to deliver. The city doesn't need to allow that or disallow it. And it doesn't matter, I don't think it matters if the provisioning centers in the community or wherever it is, they can deliver under the state law.
So that would be, but that would just be sort of an accessory kind of use for provisioning centers, so.
It's just like getting your food delivered.
Like Uber, like, Uber delivers.
Well, yeah, so Uber Eats, so why can't Uber smoke, right? Like, I'm kind of facetious in that, but I mean, so if delivery for home use isn't permitted, I mean, how is that, literally, how is that different from, I mean, Uber Eats, Uber smokes? I mean, what's the difference?
What's the difference?
I think there's security requirements. I mean, there are requirements for the transport of the product, so I don't know, again, I'm not familiar with any provisions that allow for the delivery, just like an Uber driver to show up and pick up and drop off. I can look into that and find out, but if it was permissible, it would be part of the retail establishment license. I would think that there would be certain limitations or restrictions on the transport of that product.
Can you find that out for us, please?
And I guess the other element of that, recently, the state was actually encouraging those who are properly licensed to have curbside service, to just people going into the brick-and-mortar building. So I don't know that would be addressed one way or the other.
Well, hopefully COVID will be gone by the time.
Yeah, right, isn't that a COVID thing?
Right.
I have heard, though, and that was one thing that was brought up to me from another colleague, was that with all the curbside service, I mean, to look at it from, almost from a drive-through perspective and, you know, making sure that we have enough, you know, stacking or waiting spaces to consider. So while we wouldn't have drive-throughs, I mean, I think it's something to still keep in mind, yes, I mean, COVID, that's kicking.
Right, who would have thought?
I think we need to be mindful of it, too. It wouldn't surprise me if curbside pickup is a feature of the, you know, of the economy.
The new brick-and-mortar, yeah.
I think it's going to stay.
Yeah, that's a possibility, Suzy.
Yeah, it looks like here, just a quick search of it, it does look like it allows for administrative rule 333282 allows licensed medical provisioning centers to deliver to medical patients that may otherwise not be able to travel. So that would be, that would be for a provisioning center for a medical marijuana provisioning center.
Is that right? You're just saying medical only, there's no other?
It doesn't appear that recreational is, this would be for medical facilities.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments, or even if there are any public comments?
I don't see any additional hands raised for public comment or anything in the chat.
Okay, well, if I don't see any more questions or hearing more questions, I would take an German. Anybody?
A second.
You all have a very good night.